to order at 7:00 PM. At this time, please join us for the invocation given by Alderman Shanomeyer, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Choose to bow your heads if you wish to. On tonight, let us come together in the name of spirit and unity to do the will and work of the people and to make our city a better, wonderful place. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which it stands, one nation, united in its support of the free Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mayor Buckley, Alderman Huntley, Alderwoman O'Neill, Alderwoman Pindell Charles, Alderman Finlayson, Alderman Shanomeyer, Alderman Gay, Alderman Savage, Alderman Arnett.
City Attorney, please present the first item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. The first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
This time I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended to add the City Council's citation for Ark of the Central Chesapeake Region.
So move.
Second, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is ceremonial items beginning with ID 9025, citation, "Save Our Trees."
All right, here we go. Alderman Huntley, would like to come up. We're going to save our trees. Forces people up front. Thank you, too. This, we go.
Oh, hey, thank you. All right, yeah. We are so grateful for you guys, seriously. And you know, I've gone out with you before and my dad is out clearing Ivy. No, 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 let's be clear. We were out with a bunch of other people. I mean, cutting Ivy can be a date. We just got to be clear. There were other people there. Cutting Ivy would be my father's idea of a date. On behalf of the residents of the city of Annapolis, we want to give you the City Council's citation on behalf, to you on behalf of Save Our Trees, so we know there's a lot of you guys, in recognition of your outstanding commitment to protecting and restoring the natural beauty of our public parks and open spaces. Through the hard work and dedication of all the Save Our Trees volunteers, you've become a powerful force for good, connecting people to the land, to one another, and to a shared vision of environmental stewardship. By removing invasive species that threaten the health of our native trees, you're helping to preserve the very landscape that defines Annapolis. Your efforts exemplify how grassroots action can lead to meaningful, visible change. You're not just improving the ecology of our parks, but inspiring others to get involved, to care deeply, and to take pride in the green spaces we all share. We thank you for your passion, persistence, and partnership in keeping Annapolis beautiful and rooted in community. Thank you.
All right, so I would, I just want to let you all know that we had a two-year event with Annapolis High School, and you know that I'm passionate about Annapolis High School. Go Panthers! Yeah. So it was a two-year event. We spent two falls in Quiet Waters Park clearing an area about the size of this here from invasive vines. And then the students came back in the springs, this past spring and the previous spring, and planted. And we recognized the students this past Monday, last Monday, by having an event at the high school where we had people from the state, we had people from the county, and we had people from the city there. So I want to just show you all this beautiful, sustainable Annapolis bag that the mayor's office gave to us, and over 130 students received them. It was impressive. This bag was up on the stage, the lights were on it. The students were excited, and we were really happy to do that for them.
Practically Milan fashion, right?
Yes, yes. But I also want to say that the city provided us with citations that we gave to the IB students, the art students, to the photography students, because they took their art into the woods and recorded what was happening and shared it. And the citations that the city gave, we made sure that every student got a copy of it, so that it can go in their folder as they go forward, and they can show that as work that they did for the city of Annapolis. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is proclamation, Public Service Recognition Week, ID 9925, May 5th through 11th, 2025. Not sure. You want to go to the next one?
Yeah.
We can go to the, I'll hear the firefighters.
This is for the next one, yeah.
Okay, we can go to the Public Service Recognition Week or the firefighters. Okay, we can do the firefighters. Calling ID 9825, Proclamation, International Firefighters Day, 2025.
Right, just in time, guys. Welcome. All right, Ron, are you ready? There you go, right behind you there.
Good evening to everyone. City of Annapolis proclamation, whereas International Firefighters Day is an opportunity to honor the dedication, bravery, and sacrifice of firefighters across the world. And whereas the city of Annapolis deeply appreciates the courage, professionalism, and unwavering commitment demonstrated by our firefighters in protecting lives, property, and our community. And firefighters, whereas firefighters selflessly place themselves in harm's way to safeguard others, often working long hours under dangerous and challenging conditions. And whereas firefighters face extraordinary risks and challenges daily and continue to serve with distinction and honor. Now therefore, I Gavin Buckley, Mayor of the City of Annapolis, Maryland, do hereby proclaim May 4th, 2025, as International Firefighters Day. In the city of Annapolis, I urge all residents to join in expressing gratitude to our brave fire service personnel. And witness whereof, set on a hand and seal caused by the great seal of the city of Annapolis, it will be affixed as 14th day of May in the year of our Lord, 2025. Congratulations. Thank you all. God bless.
Also, got some public servants up here and plenty of public servants in the audience today. So it is a proclamation for Public Service Recognition Week honors the hard work, dedication, and accomplishment of government employees at the local, state, and federal levels. Whereas public servants contribute greatly to the quality of life in our community through their expertise, integrity, and commitment to service. And whereas the innovation, perseverance, and compassion shown by public employees make our government more accessible, responsive, effective for all of our residents. And whereas the city of Annapolis is strengthened and enriched by the efforts of those who dedicate their career to serving others. So let's have a round of applause for all the great public servants that we have in this city. We appreciate you so much. Thank you. And I think we have this one still. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, the next item in the City Council's citation for the Ark, Central Chesapeake Region.
Anybody here from the Ark? Hello? Going good? And I will read this. On behalf of the residents of the city of Annapolis and the Annapolis City Council, we proudly recognize the Ark, Central Chesapeake Region, for its unwavering commitment to empowering individuals with intellectual and development disabilities. Through advocacy, innovation, and community engagement, the Ark has championed inclusivity and meaningful opportunities for all. Each year, our celebrations impact services as a powerful reminder of the dedication, leadership, and resilience that drive this mission forward. In honoring 10 remarkable community leaders for their outstanding service, achievement, and social responsibility, advocacy, and leadership, the Ark uplifts the very best of our community, including those who work tirelessly to foster dignity, equity, and opportunity for every individual. We extend our deepest gratitude, the Ark of Central Chesapeake Region, for its invaluable contribution. May your efforts continue to inspire and transform lives for years to come. Thank you so much. Thank you. And if you'd like to say a few words, sir.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate all that you
All right, Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item.
Yes, sir. The next item is petitions, reports, and communications, beginning with update from the mayor.
Right. Something here. So, good evening. I want to start out by thanking everyone who organized, participated in, and attended this weekend's Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Parade and the African Diaspora Festival on Saturday. These events take a lot of work to put on, and it's gratifying when the public comes out to embrace the sense of community these events inspire. We have a couple of other parades coming up also. The Memorial Day Parade is on Monday, the 26th, and the Annapolis Pride Parade is on Saturday, the 31st. We hope to see you all out along the parade route. This Thursday, at the Pitt Moye Recreation Center, the county's Department of Aging is hosting an Older Americans Month, I'm in that category, celebrations with resources, a fair, a raffle, prizes, and there's live entertainment. The event is open to anyone 55 and up and a resident. If you'd like to get a complimentary lunch, you'll need to register before you go. Visit the county website, and it is free. The time is from 11:00 to 2:00 PM on Thursday, the 15th, and the place gets really, really busy. So hope to see some of you out there. Also, mark your calendar for the 20th of May, when we will dedicate the Perrin J. Mitchell Memorial on the grounds of the Pitt Moye Recreation Center. Congressman Mitchell was a trailblazer, the first African American to represent Maryland in the United States House of Representatives. He was a tireless champion for civil rights, fair housing, and minority businesses. He was one of the founding members of the Congressional Black Caucus. On a side note, his nephew, a former state senator, Michael Mitchell, was once arrested in Annapolis for a sit-in at a segregated restaurant. And you know who called to bail him out? None other than Mayor Roger Pitt Moye. So join us on 1:00 PM on the 28th at the Pitt Moye Rec Center to reveal, for the reveal of the great statue and the dedication. Thank you. Next week is Commissioning Week for the United States Naval Academy, the class of 2025. First off, to the midshipmen who began their plebe summer in the middle of the COVID pandemic. Let's give them a big round of applause. Congratulations. Of course, the Blue Angels will arrive on Tuesday at 11:00 AM and do a practice from 1:00 to 3:00 PM. On Wednesday, the Blue Angels will do their show from 1:00 to 3:00 PM. And then on Friday, the mids will graduate at the commissioning ceremony at the Naval Academy Stadium, which is a ticketed event. On Tuesday and Wednesday, there will be some parking restrictions in Eastport to allow emergency vehicles to get all the way through to Horn Point. Please be alert for posted signs. In downtown, expect heavy traffic and full garages. Best bet, if you're coming downtown to see the Blue Angels, is to park along West Street at Park Place and take the free Magenta Shuttle downtown. Please also note, to get into the yard, there are new stricter requirements for identification. So please visit usna.edu for details on those restrictions. The Johnnys held their commencement on Saturday, and we also recognize that St. John's College, class of 25, as well as our Annapolis High School graduates, all have graduated, and congratulations to all of them. Let's give them all a great round of applause. And lastly, I'd like to take a moment to remember Charles Robinson Sonny Smith Jr., whom Gary Jobson, our most famous sailor, called a giant within the sport of sailing and a transformative leader for the Annapolis Yacht Club. Smith passed quietly in his sleep on April 23rd. He was 98 years old and has recently been honored as the longest-tenured member of AYC. A Smith, a seventh generation Anapolitan, got into sailing when he was just eight years old, a graduate of Annapolis High School. He joined AYC at 18 years old before enlisting in the army, serving in the Philippines during World War II. He served twice as the AYC Commodore, courageously presiding over the removal of racial requirements for membership in the early 1970s. He recently got a pin for having been a member for 80 years. Smith is survived by his first mate, and let's hear a moment in remembrance of this amazing man. Thank you. Now let's get on with the meeting. Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item.
Yes, sir. The next item is reports by committees.
Alderman O'Neill.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Transportation Committee met last week. We had a presentation from the Transportation Department on their transit development plan that will be working its way through the council the next couple of weeks. And our next meeting is scheduled for June 11th here in council chambers at 4:00 PM.
Thank you. Alderman Shanomeyer, then Alderman Gay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Economic Matters will be meeting on Wednesday, May 21st at 6:30 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Housing and Human Welfare Committee will be meeting May the 12th, 2025. It'll be virtual meeting. We'll be discussing O3324, ID 9325, getting an update from Director Jakubiak. I want to add the Housing Authority update from the Office of Law. I just actually read in this that they're going to litigation, so I would like an update on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Finlayson, then Alderman Savage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Rules and City Government Committee met on May the 2nd. We discussed two pieces of legislation, O125, expansion of childcare options in Annapolis. We gave that legislation a favorable recommendation. And the other, O3024, fence permit requirements, we postponed action on expecting or needing more information. Our next meeting is Friday, June 6, 1:00, here in council chambers. All are welcome to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Savage, then Alderman Pindell Charles.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Environmental Matters, let's see, we took action, well, we discussed the transit development plan. We did not take action, but it is going to be back on our agenda next month. And I don't think, well, I'm not sure if we'll have any changes, but we're going to focus on discussing how we can get, how we can better coordinate our transit development plan with our planning as far as, you know, where we want to add density. And so we hope to get, I believe, the director of planning zoning there as well. We approved, we recommended approval for O125, which is expansion of childcare options. And I think we beat Economic Matters' record for getting something through quickly. Let's see, general discussion, we talked about, we had to postpone, I'm sorry, no, we didn't postpone this, Eastport Flood Mitigation Update. We did discuss that a bit. We'll have a more detailed update next month for anybody who's interested. And we also discussed, let's see, a couple of things, I think. Oh, Cars Beach. Exciting developments on that. They are going to be replenishing the beach. That's the current proposal. Make more room for people to enjoy and hopefully go swimming in the future. Discuss the stormwater fee increase. And I'm trying to think if there's anything I need to share on that. Not right now. That's all we have. Next meeting will be June 12th at 3:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Public Safety Standing Committee met on May the 12th. At that time, we took ID 3425, Annapolis Police Department, Chief Jackson, Captain of Operations, Howen, and Captain Thacker of Patrol were present to answer questions from the committee. ID 3525, Annapolis Fire Department update, Chief Romali and Deputy Chief Lopez were present to answer questions from the committee. ID 3625, Office of Emergency Management, Chief Simmons was present to answer questions from the committee. And as we're doing per month, we're focusing on a ward, one ward per month. And last month, this past month, we focused on Ward Three. The Public Safety Standing Committee meeting is scheduled for June, for May, for June, I'm sorry. And we have not chosen a date yet, but we will be focusing on Ward Two, because June the 2nd, our normal date, we're having a City Council budget meeting. So we're going to yield to Alderwoman O'Neill from Ward Two to give us the date and the time that comports with her schedule. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alderman Huntley.
Well, the Finance Committee's been busy. We had three weeks of our budget hearings, and then this past week of deliberations. And ultimately, that resulted in our 29-page Finance Committee Report on the Budget. For anybody who's just looking to skim that, I'd say read the whole thing, because it's worth it. But I would also say, make sure you in particular take a look at the last three pages, which have the, all of the committee's recommendations and amendments. The amendments that would be reflected in the underlying budget ordinance are in bold, so you can see things where we're actually sort of moving money around, are in bold. Whereas some of the other ones, such as, such as a new performance metric for the Information Technology Department are not in bold. So you can really kind of see some of the most important things. But I would also, again, just recommend that you flip through and look at all of the good news and challenge sections, just to highlight some of the most important top-line ones. The city is maintaining its very strong bond ratings. The general fund is projected to have a 4.5% growth. The total operating budget is projected to grow by 4.6%. And the, relative to last year, the proposed capital budget is 50.6% lower, quite a bit lower. But as you can see on page six, there's a big difference in the makeup of the capital budget between this year and last year, namely, we have far fewer grants than last year. In fact, we actually have negative grants this year in the capital budget. And yeah, there's a lot of great places to see what's going on. But again, I would really just, most importantly, point you to those last three pages that recommend our changes and amendments.
Point of information, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Gay.
Thank you. I just want to be correct. We only have one meeting on the 22nd to discuss the work session or to discuss, obviously, the amendments submitted by the council. Will that include this, which we received on Friday, or which was done Friday, after our amendment deadline? And so there are some things in here that will require an amendment from the council. And so my question is, again, back to my original point, since the amendment deadline is not specified in the city code, we should, we can technically still amend the budget. I just want to be correct on it.
I would defer to your, the City Attorney on your process question, and maybe I would defer to your, the City Attorney on your process question and maybe to our City Manager. But what I can tell you is that the other question you asked was, oh, oh, so the amendments that are in here, that our Finance Committee recommended amendments, and the Budget Manager has taken care of submitting all of them. And I talked them through with him and the Acting City Manager today. So just, if, if part of the question was, are these amendments submitted as amendments? The answer is yes.
And, and I just, and which I appreciate, and just for clarity, so on the 22nd, we'll be able to add amendments to the Finance Committee Report that we just got today, really in physical form.
Mr. City Manager? Miss, Miss City?
Vicki Buckland is Acting City Manager. The Finance Committee's amendments sort of stand on their own, but everybody else, there's a series of other amendment requests that we've received from across council, and those get all then added to that list. So there's Finance Committee ones, and then there's the others that we've received, including some that you had voiced.
Okay. I'm going to take that as a yes, that when we meet on the 22nd, that this document that we just got will be able to propose amendments on the floor today.
I'll turn it back to the mayor.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item of the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item of the agenda is comments by the General Committee.
Okay. First signed up to speak is Neely Garrity. Please come forward.
It already was one. Good evening. My name is Neely Garrity, a city resident at 518 First Street and Executive Director of Play Annapolis. Play Annapolis represents over 4,000 youth athletes in partnership with 18 local nonprofits. If you're here tonight in support of Play Annapolis or any of our partners, please stand. Thank you. We are more than just frustrated parents. We are an organized, community-rooted coalition reflecting the diversity of Annapolis youth recreation. We are here tonight with a unified message and a call to action for the City Council. Our concerns stem from clear gaps in the Annapolis Recreation and Parks Department's proposed budget. ARPD does a lot of good for our city, but together, we can do better. First, I want to thank ARPD for a successful program they run, Kids Day In. When school is closed, ARPD opens the doors of Pitt Moyer Rec Center to all children at no cost. For working families, this is an invaluable service. Play Annapolis formed in response to declining youth sports participation and inequalities low-income families face to access recreation. Our mission is simple. Every child, regardless of background, should have the access to the benefits of sports and recreation, belonging, mentorship, academic success, physical and mental well-being, to name a few. To remove these barriers, we provide scholarships, translation support, and community outreach. We've helped over 300 local kids access sports, started after-school clubs in soccer, field hockey, and volleyball, and connected hundreds of families to opportunities through our annual sports fair. We have a pulse on the community, having surveyed over 300 families and 17 organizations to better understand our community's needs. I have handed out a summary of our budget suggestions. You guys should have all got this, and I will follow it up with an email as well. My focus tonight is the ARPD latchkey program, which provides aftercare for working families at our public schools. It currently operates in five elementary schools, leaving out three Title I schools, which serve the highest number of low-income families. Right now, children at these schools are dismissed at 2:30 with no supervision once they arrive home if their parents are working and they can't afford private aftercare. That's not just a safety issue, it's a lost opportunity for meaningful youth engagement during a critical part of their day. Any increase in the latchkey budget should go toward offering aftercare at these three schools. Instead of launching a new city football team that competes with existing programs and further strains the limited field space we have in our city, we need to invest those funds in after-school recreation. Play Annapolis has already piloted successful programs after school. We invite ARPD to partner with us to expand these offerings and better serve working families. Let's do what's right, revise the ARPD budget to reflect the urgent needs of our youth. Let's invest in what families are already asking for: access, equity, and aftercare. Play Annapolis wants to collaborate, not compete. We've done the groundwork, we have the data, we have the community behind us. Now we're asking for a seat at the table. Let's build a stronger, more inclusive, and more effective recreational system for all Annapolis children. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Alex Castro.
My name is Alex Siriano Castro, and I live at 1008 Monroe Street. I am a student at Annapolis Middle School, and I play on the volleyball team, The Jellyfish. The team was started by the Police Athletic League because there wasn't any local volleyball for kids like me. I'm really thankful for the chance to play. Thank you for giving me the opportunity. Last year, I went to Eastport Elementary, and I played soccer through Play Annapolis. We practiced after school and played games against other community schools. It was fun, close to home, and my parents didn't have to go far. Next year, I want to try out for the Annapolis Middle School Soccer Team. This fall, I got to play soccer thanks to a scholarship from Play Annapolis and Annapolis Soccer Club, and I know I wouldn't be able to without their help. That's why I'm asking ARPD to spend more of its budget on programs that reach all kids, especially those who need local after-school activities. Please bring more recreations to our school. Meet us where we already are. Invest in us, we are ready to play. Thank you.
Next up is Alison Lehman.
My name is Alison Lehman. I live at 1 Perry Avenue in Annapolis. I'm a proud partner of Play Annapolis and President of the SMA Girls Lacrosse and Field Hockey. We've been around since 1983, serving girls, 600 youth in the community during our fall and spring seasons. Today, I want to highlight the pressing issue that affects our youth and the future of youth sports in Annapolis: the maintenance and availability of our sports facilities. One of the standout initiatives that deserves recognition is the Girls Play Initiative. This program has made great strides in promoting active participation among young girls in our community, ensuring they have access to sports and the benefits that come with them. However, while we celebrate these successes, we must address the challenges we face, particularly concerning our facilities. In a recent survey conducted with over 300 families, we asked the crucial question, what is the biggest issue in youth sports in Annapolis? The response was clear. The number-two issue right behind costs was the conditions of our facilities. This, and this significant concern cannot be overlooked. Currently, the maintenance of our facilities, especially Bates Middle School and Germantown, leaves much to be desired. The fields are not in ideal condition and are more of green spaces than playing fields. You can see some of the pictures of the current conditions in the slides that Neely passed out. These conditions are, or these concerns of poor conditions have been expressed in several occasions, including sports symposiums held by ARPD. Unfortunately, the response was disheartening, and ARPD stated they don't have the budget for better maintenance and acknowledged that our fields are overused. This situation is unacceptable. Other cities and counties have found ways to invest in their facilities, ensuring their youth have access to safe, well-maintained spaces to play. As a program, especially mine and others that are partners with Play Annapolis, we have lost several Annapolis residents to other surrounding programs because they can offer better conditions, including turf fields. We can and must do better. Therefore, I urge you to consider the Parks and Recs Budget Summary of $1,691,000. This budget should allocate funds to only improve our existing, not only improve our existing facilities, but also to activate fields that currently remain unused within our city limits. Additionally, we must collaborate with the county to invest in the county-owned fields located in our city, which are not being adequately budgeted. In conclusion, investing in our youth and their sports facility is not merely a budgetary decision, it is a commitment to the future of our community. Let's work together to ensure that all of our children have access to safe, well-maintained facilities that allow them to thrive in sports and beyond. Thanks for your time, and let's make this happen.
My name is Noah McCamley. My address is 617 Admiral Drive, and I'm in 7th grade. I currently attend Bates Middle School, but I recently moved from Southern, from South County. I play many sports, but my main ones are lacrosse and field hockey. I've had the privilege to play for many teams and on many fields. I've played at Tracy's Landing, Bell Branch, Davidsonville Park, Bates Middle School, and Germantown. My concern is that the fields here in Annapolis have not been as well-kept as other fields in the county. The fields in Annapolis are either a dust field, mid, mid, mud putt, or uneven ground instead of well-kept Bermuda fields. I am worried I will get injured twisting an ankle or tear my ACL because of the fields. I hope you continue to invest in children's sports and provide them access to safe and beautiful fields in Annapolis. Thank you.
Everybody's saying two minutes, like I'm going to take long. Good evening, everybody. My name is Stanford Womack. I reside at 21 Silipanna Road here in Annapolis. I want to speak on the budget tonight, especially the Annapolis Recreation and Parks Budget, and precisely the $32,000 that was allocated for a new football program. You guys, you know, we've been around since 1989. We've been doing football, basketball, baseball. We do an after-school study program. You know, we, we've been doing this for quite some time, so you can understand how surprised I was to find out that our Recreation and Parks Department wanted to compete with us in football. I've been around for a long time, over 30-some years, and I hadn't seen that happen until now. So I want to focus on the $32,000. I'm told that it's been pulled and it's not going to go to football, but you know, to me, it's, 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 it's a bigger issue. Recently, Play Annapolis did a survey, and over 300 families showed that we are losing over 150 youth collectively who participate in, in our sports program. That's about 33%. And they choose to play in other communities and/or private organizations. And one of the reasons that we're losing those kids is because of our facilities. Our facilities are atrocious, people. I mean, you guys should really come out and check out some of our practices and some of our games. We have terrible facilities. We have one field, we have no lights, okay? And as a result, we've got thousands of kids who want to play in Annapolis. We're the capital city, guys. Every other organization, there's 17 other communities around Annapolis that we play against. Every one of them have at least one long-lighted field, if not two or three. We have none. I don't know why. And I'd like to ask you guys to help us out, you know, help us to find a solution to some of the problems that we're facing because they're serious. As I said, we don't have lighted fields. We asked if we could install portable lights. The answer was no. We asked if we could use a storage facility for some of our large equipment. The answer was no. We asked if we could put a portable storage container at our own cost on the facility, on the field. The answer was no. We asked if we could convert our baseball, one of our baseball fields to a 90-foot diamond because we've got kids 13, 14, 15 who want to play baseball in the city. Can't do it because we don't have a field. The answer was no. We play at least four home games each season, and we asked for a home team, home field, and the answer was no. And I know that my time is running out, so I'll be brief. I just ask you guys, if I were in your shoes, this is what I would do. I would meet with the 17 organizations who are here tonight to find out what our main problems are. And we ask that you don't dilute the pool of youth participants by competing with nonprofits. Activate Williams Whalen. My God, it's been over 12 years, and it's still sitting there. I did see some kids playing on it just the other day, though. I was surprised, and I'm hoping that we'll be able to open it up. Diversify the Advisory Board and work with them to find solutions. And the last thing is to divert some of the special project money to improve and better maintain our fields. We need solutions, guys. We don't need competition. Thank you.
So next up is George Garrett.
How you doing tonight? My name is George Garrett. I'm from the Powerhawk Football Organization here in Annapolis. But I'm also here representing Play Annapolis. I'm here to talk about concerns about the same thing Mr. Womack just talked about. We have a beautiful field right here off Spar Road that's not even being utilized. Like he said, 12 years, that field hasn't been utilized. Instead of sitting up there destroying that field and putting something else there, rebuild that field for the kids here in Annapolis. We have a beautiful football program. We have two beautiful football programs here in Annapolis. We do not need to compete with another one. Right now and stuff, we sit there, pow, the county, we sit on the county side of the line. So we're, you know, we got county funding. County actually sat there and rebuilt our baseball field. They added on three new baseball fields for us, but the one problem was they didn't redo the football field. When it came down to trying to practice football this year and stuff, it was fighting for space. We had to go outside of the city. All of our kids come from the city. Our kids live right here in Annapolis City, but they're going outside. We had to practice them out in Crownesville. But we have the space here. Like Mr. Womack sat there and said, you have Bates Field at one point in time, the field, the teams that were going out there were able to use the storage facility at Bates. Can't do it. Re-put the money back into those fields here in Annapolis. That's what us residents are here for. We don't want to sit there and send our people outside. We don't want to send our kids outside, to outside organizations to play sports. We want them here, right here in Annapolis and stuff. Mayor, I'm asking you, and council members, I'm asking you, you have the allegations to sit there and do this. Please, recognize our kids. They're our future. You know, if you're not putting it back into them, where's it going to go? They're going to sit there and leave the city. We don't want them to leave the city. We want them to stay here in Annapolis. So I thank you guys very much for letting me speak. God bless you guys. Have a great night.
Emily Tommasini, next up.
May I make a brief point of personal privilege? Two sentences?
Oldman Huntley.
Something I forgot to say in mentioning the Finance Committee Report, but this gentleman reminded me of. We started off with a new quote this year from Governor Moore that says, "We know that budgets are moral documents. Where we choose to invest actually defines our values and it dictates the course of our future." Thank you for your testimony. Just reminded me of that quote. Appreciate you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Emily Tommasini. I'm a city resident at 212 Eastern Avenue, and I'm here to comment on the proposed FY26 Recreation Budget. I serve as Treasurer and Board Member of Play Annapolis, and I'm also the Commissioner of the Middle School Jellyfish Volleyball Program, run in partnership with the Annapolis Police Department's Community Outreach Division. First, I want to recognize ARPD's support in making our program possible, particularly through access to the Pitt Moyer Recreation Center for practice. The same goes for their support of the Hackafool. These are steps in the right direction, but we have more work to do. These are steps in the right direction, but we have more work to do. In the proposed FY26 budget, $1.6 million is allocated for an esports glass gym floor, and $80,000 is allocated for a video game arena at the Stanton Center. While these additions might be appealing, it's hard to justify expenses on new equipment. Like you've heard, when our fields are in disrepair, Williams Whalen remains closed, existing community centers are not activated, and nonprofits serving thousands of kids through sports are struggling to find space to operate. We're trying to grow programs to meet the demand in a system that can't support what already exists. At the same time, too many families still face barriers accessing sports and recreation in our city. In our recent Play Annapolis survey, we found the top barriers to participation for Spanish-speaking families and Title I schools were that it was too expensive, there was a lack of awareness and difficulty with registration, and lack of transportation. These are solvable problems. 86% of families from Title I schools said they would use a scholarship if it were easier to access. 69% said they would use transportation if it was available. The current scholarship process for ARPD programs is confusing and inconsistent. At Play Annapolis, we've created a streamlined scholarship process with our partners that makes it easier for families to apply, qualify, and enroll. The city should do the same. And we need to stop waiting for kids to come to us. Start activating underused community centers, especially in public housing. Fix and utilize the ARPD camp buses. Meet kids where they are or bring the programs to them. When we talk about improving access to recreation, we're also talking about protecting our kids. Most of us speaking tonight have kids on our teams who have been touched in the last six months by gun violence in our city. At the Boys and Girls Club turf field, at the bus stop on Clay Street, and most recently, the murder in Rodwood. Clearly, I've been touched by it as well. We need to give our kids something to belong to, something consistent, something safe. I helped start Play Annapolis because I want to see the diversity of our city reflecting in the programs that our kids join, on the field, in the gym, or in the dance studio. Together, they will build a stronger Annapolis. We need your support to make it happen. The recreation budget should meet the moment and the need. Let's prioritize access, safety, and equity. Thank you.
Next up is Mackenzie Corum.
Hi, my name is Mackenzie Corum. I play for Jellyfish Volleyball, and I'm 13 years old. I attend Bates Middle School. Jellyfish Volleyball was started because club volleyball was the only option for kids in Annapolis. It's expensive and it's hard to get into. Jellyfish gave me the chance to try something new, and now I love the sport. We have 42 players on three different teams, thanks to Play Annapolis, the Police Athletic League, and our coaches. They've created an opportunity for more kids in our city to play and be part of the team. When some players need rides to practice, Coach Tomassini or Corporal Davis help with rides. That kind of support means a lot. Most of this season, my team practices at Annapolis Middle School, and the nets there are sad, and really, and they are really hard to set up. It's not made for real volleyball, and it's tough to learn on. Practicing at Pitt Moyer is way different. It's a real gym with good equipment, and we feel like we belong there. Since the fall, my team has gone on, gone from never winning a set to having a winning record this spring season. We've worked really hard, and it shows. I hope you support us by giving local teams like Jellyfish more access to Pitt Moyer and helping transportation so more kids can be a part of it. Thank you.
Next up, Tim DeWitt.
Good evening. I'm Timothy DeWitt. I reside at 1905 Delaney Place, Annapolis. I'm on the Board of Annapolis Soccer Club. I am their Technical Director, and most relevant tonight, I'm the Field Coordinator. So I deal with all these issues of getting fields all over Annapolis. Annapolis Soccer Club, each season has between 900 and 1,100 players. Fall and spring, we have 1,200 players who play foots all in the winter in one gym. Each season, we probably have 15% to 20% of our players on scholarship, so they don't pay anything. What I'm here to talk about tonight is the Williams Whalen Project, Project 40075. This is a project that everybody in the room is gonna support, because it's really important to all of us. An artificial turf field, if it's laid out properly, I could put back-to-back practices, four young teams first, followed by three older teams, and I can accommodate practices for about 110 kids in one evening on one field. Grass fields cannot handle that kind of usage. And when we use the other fields, we don't load them as much, because we can't. And we don't load them, and we don't use them in the bad weather. One of the things about Play Annapolis that's been so uplifting for all of us is that it's brought all of the nonprofit youth organizations together, and they can do things like collect data, take surveys of the entire community. And you've heard several citations here today to the surveys they've done. And mine is when they surveyed the organizations, the top three things that were important, 85% said access and availability of fields was the top priority. Second priority was facilities, and third priority was field maintenance. So it's all the things that everybody's talked about tonight. But building an artificial turf field isn't enough, because there's an underlying problem on all these things you've heard tonight. To me, I've been involved with Annapolis Soccer Club for 20-plus years as a volunteer. I probably work about 1,000 hours a year as a volunteer for the soccer club. ARPD is an adversary, and everybody here is gonna tell you the same thing. Now, I'm part of a nationwide organization of soccer clubs. I go out to Colorado every year for a convention with 90 other clubs and talk to them, and every one of them will tell me that their city or local government is their partner and supports them. And I'm throwing up my arms, saying, "I don't understand." I am fighting with them over everything. I don't get honest answers. They won't tell me who they permitted. I look on social media, and I see broad-necked field hockey over on Bates. I see broad-necked field hockey in the Pitt Moyer Rec Center. I see for-profit lacrosse clubs on the field instead of us. I get emails sent to parents from our club that ask, that say, "Oh, well, you know, your field coordinator submitted their permit request too late, and that's why you didn't get the field." So I have to do a Public Information Act request to find, "I submitted my request two months before the other group." Why is our Parks and Rec an adversary of nonprofit sports clubs? This attempted allocation of funds for a football program is absolutely ridiculous, and it really stands out to me as showing what the problem is, right? It needs to stop. We're here to help. We're helping thousands of kids, and we would like the city to be our partner. And Play Annapolis, to me, is the way you can partner with all of us. So we'd encourage you to encourage Parks and Rec to change their approach and invite us to work with them. Thank you.
Next up, Jeremiah.
Good evening, council members, mayor. My name is Jeremiah Bachkan. I am the co-founder of Annapolis Peak Social, and my original name was actually the Annapolis Social League. So I'm excited to be here. My address is 101 Kingswood Road of Indianapolis my whole life, really. Product for Annapolis High as well. So we run sports leagues and community events throughout the city. We serve 5,000 members playing 22 sports and now five counties. This is where we started, though, so it's always close to us. We do thank Annapolis Parks and Rec for helping us get started here. It was COVID-2020. They do run good programs, and some of them are very accessible, very inclusive, very community-driven. That being said, as everyone testified today, that continues to be an issue moving forward. This year, we have less participation. We have fewer teams, fewer fields available, and fewer leagues. A lot of cases, it's not, because there's a lack of demand. It's quite the opposite. It's just a lack of space. And here in Annapolis, you can't use, obviously, Naval Academy, that makes sense. Can't use St. John's, can't use Key School, or you're paying big dollars to St. Mary's, Indian Creek, places that don't really need the money. And we want to give the money to the city. We want to give you guys more capital. We want to rent your fields, use your facilities. But it's hard to do that, as they're talking about today, to work with Annapolis Parks and Rec on some of these opportunities. A lot of it is, as we heard, like Womack said, they can't even put storage units on the thing. The fields are not the best maintained, and we have a public-private partnership that we pitched several times. I have guys that own landscaping companies that can come in that are world-class, charge hundreds of thousands of dollars for some of this field, and they'll fix it almost at cost. And they won't let us touch anything, because it's out of scope or not allowed or unapproved. And so fields continue to go unmaintained, so we can't use them. So rather than fixing the fields and using public partnerships that could work with the Annapolis Parks and Rec, they go unused, because in order to fix it for not being overused, they just shut them down. And that's not the answer, because now players are going to Baltimore City. They're going to Howard County. They're going to different regions and areas than here. We cut our field, our teams, in half because of a new policy. Those teams are now playing in Baltimore City and other places, and all that economic development. So when players, ours are adults, right? 21 and over. So after they go and play together, they go to bars, they go to restaurants, they socialize. And that economic development is no longer happening in the city of Annapolis. It's happening other places, because we're not letting it happen here. Capital Project 475, we mentioned that. It's about $2.8 million or $1.3 million, how you look at it. If you look at the next capital budget for the next five years, it's $312 million. Talking about less than 1% goes to Grisco and Williams Whalen. So that less than 1% means 100% to this group right here. Because you give them a turf field, you give them lights, you give them more access, there will be more kids playing in here. I mentioned I'm to A-Hi. So my football team, at one point in shotgun, I had a kid from Clay Street, behind him, a kid from Robinwood, behind him, a kid from Newtown 20. So we've seen what sports can do. It ties neighborhoods together. This gun violence, if you put them in a sports field, they're all on the same team. You put them in a neighborhood, then the social issues start to populate. So we're trying to break that down, whether they're six years old or 60. You get them on the pickleball court, and you can break down a lot of those social barriers. And so that's why we're asking for help here. Again, we want to help the city. We want to help invest in it. We have groups that are willing to do that. We have partnerships that are private and public that can help with this. And as somebody mentioned, like, we're the capital. People look for us. So let's continue to make that the case here. Thank you all.
Next up, Scott Shelton.
I'm not here to talk about sports, but I'm a big believer in it. It changed my family's life, and anyway. I'm Scott Shelton, 1744 Strive. Pastor of Heritage Baptist Church. Been there, been here for nine years. It's the first time I've been here with a personal complaint, but I wanted to draw some attention to it for you. If you know me, you know I'm a solutions guy. I like to solve problems. I like all of this, so I'm here to say I'm here to help solve the problem. We at our church, Heritage Baptist, we like to think we're welcoming. We have a motto, "Mi casa es su casa," my house is your house. And so kind of this feeling of complaining is not on my repertoire usually. And certainly compared to the many problems impacting our city, mine is pretty small. And in fact, I'm frustrated and embarrassed that I'd even have to bring it up. I'm pretty mad, if I'm honest, because y'all stuff is totally legit. Alderman Finlayson has been helping me. Appreciate that and her leadership. But she asked if I'd come tonight and share my recent encounter with a code violation. Hopefully, it can shed some light on some recent implementation of noise ordinances involved with gas-powered leaf blowers. That's where I hear. From what I can gather, the origin of this ordinance was sculpted to be an environmental matter. And, but its final unveiling, it was about noise pollution. I'll spare you the details of why finding a comparably-powered electric leaf blower and their batteries is frustratingly expensive, or why this stings, because my congregation's care for stewardship of our land has been entrusted, and we value it highly. Anyhow, this past Thursday, we were cited for our use of a gas-powered leaf blower at 3:00 PM along Forest Drive section of our parking lot. I'm not even kidding. And which spans a length of about 100 yards. This loud section of Forest Drive faces and is bordered by roadway traffic and commercial development. My opinions on this matter are fairly vast, but as it concerns our property, I am seeking an exemption. I do think this puts a heavy burden on larger property owners. That's unfair. To which, the response of you, the receiver, might be, "Well, where were you when this was being drafted?" Fair question. I was paying attention. Well, why didn't you speak up? Also fair. I do have my reasons, believe it or not. So please don't let these questions or those questions or my showing up to the party late presence here tonight stop you from fully considering the implications this makes on businesses, and particularly small businesses and large landholders as you seek to make this ordinance more adaptable. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you. Scott, Scott, Alderman Finlayson.
I don't have, well, I do want to say thank you, Pastor Shelton, for coming in this evening. But if I might ask Acting City Manager Buckland if she would look into this. I had spoken to Dylan, I'm sorry, I can't remember his last name. And he told me that this was taken care of. So if you wouldn't mind just following up with him and with Pastor Shelton, that'd be great.
I would imagine it's just a warning, and I don't think we have a leaf police yet. I'm not, I'm surprised.
No, it's a real citation.
Really? The sponsor?
I think we could ask for a report at the next Council or Environmental Matters, but my understanding is that we were leading with, even now, warnings first, unless it's a repeat offense.
We'll get it waived. We'll find out, yeah. Aldman Huntley.
I just said, I know the sponsor's intention was to exempt commercial properties from this, and it's, well, the ban only applies within residential districts. That's what it says on the city. Okay, all right.
But we will investigate, and we'll get back to you, pastor. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
Alderman Gay.
Thank you. I actually, gonna get back to the, because I think he was the last speaker.
Did you want to come back?
No, was he the last speaker?
Nope, we've got more speakers ahead.
For the?
Thank you. For different things, Phil.
Well, yeah, okay. Well, then my thing is for the first, for the Play Annapolis then. One, if we can add it to our Housing Human Welfare Committee, because I was thinking, what committee could this go to? It'd probably be us. So we'll handle it in Housing Human Welfare. Two, who is the Chair of the Recreation Advisory Committee? Isn't this, I mean, this screams that would be their role, to act as a liaison to the, to the city council? And so that would be?
Please don't, please.
That would be helpful. And then, I guess, yeah, let, if you could get this on Housing Human Welfare, because I'm also curious, of the 17 organizations, which of them are receiving funding in our community grants, which we're about to amend and decide on the 22nd? All of that would be helpful beforehand, just in case we could, you know, add $100,000 or whatever to help somebody, so. Thank you.
A lot of them get community. I'll call you up afterwards, okay? Yeah. Okay, next up is Phil Attetto. Hey, how you doing, Phil?
Good evening, Phil Attetto, Poplar Avenue in Pearl Heights. I want to bring to light a strong cognitive dissonance or at minimum, a connection that needs to be made in our community around climate change and our words versus our actions. As our elected leaders, I'm hoping you will have the courage to lead our community forward with your words and actions. I've always been grateful that our city elected officials speak about and consider climate change regularly, and I applaud your work on improving transit and helping us be a more bikeable city, despite more than a little bit of resistance, to say the least. I have hopes that we will have an Annapolis Climate Week, similar to DC Climate Week, not just for talking like international cop meetings, but for more focused on action and empowerment. However, when I look at our actions, I see some strong mismatches, such as burning gas so people can warm their hands at the Christmas Boat Parade. A nice touch for sure, but is it really necessary? I'm here today to focus on the climate elephant in the room, the military and its role as the number-one polluter in the world, and how that relates to our community, namely through the annual Blue Angels Air Show. How can we claim to want to address climate change while endorsing the wholly unnecessary burning of fossil fuels for the air show? For reference, each of the Blue Angels jets uses more than 1,200 gallons of fuel per hour, With one fighter plane in one hour emitting as much carbon dioxide particulates and other pollutants as the average family car in an entire year. And this doesn't even factor in all the hours of practice leading up to these shows. Climate and health damage from air shows is sizable as military air shows are massive polluters. They'll billed as free entertainment. In fact, air shows are extremely expensive and paid for with tax dollars. Much better spent on healthcare, education, and so many neglected community needs. The cost of our local police, fire and other city services required to shut down the bridges and other roads as well as crowd control are considerable. And again, our tax dollars much better spent in many other ways. At a time when we are talking about government spending and cuts, which absolutely must be done, surely air shows are considered fat to be trimmed. This is without a doubt a Navy town, an endorsement of the air show, Military Bowl and other events. I understand it's largely about the money and commerce that it brings to the city. But at what point is the money we get from these fruit from the poison tree? To be clear, I'm not here to lecture you from my high horse, as I have also enjoyed the air show over the years. I'm here to say what isn't being said for us to collectively ponder and reconsider how to act and address our own cognitive dissonance and live and act in ways that are in line with the values that we state. If we know better, we have to do better. A significant part of the climate crisis is a crisis of a lack of imagination. We just can't think outside of capitalist colonial mindsets. Veterans for Peace and three fifty dot org have been pushing for a few years now to end air shows. And I urge you as leaders of our community who hopefully care about the world we leave for our children and future generations to help lead by using your voice and the power you have to work with the academy to end air shows here in Annapolis. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Next up, Amy Donovan. No, Amy, going once. Nope, you good? Thank you. Erin McCop.
Hi, everybody. I'm glad I came tonight. It was interesting to hear everything you all had to say. Mr. Mayor and the council, thank you for the work you do to keep our city running smoothly. My name is Erin McCop. I'm president of the Germantown Homewood Community Association and a Germantown Elementary School parent. On April twenty-third, a child was struck by a vehicle while crossing West Street to attend Germantown Elementary School. The city of Annapolis section of Maryland four fifty, a state roadway is problematic in design and uncomfortable for pedestrians to use and cross. I'm told that parents with children in high school have been asking for improvements since their children attended elementary school. Last week, I met with the Annapolis Police Department, who acknowledged the issue of vehicles traveling at high speeds. I'm here to ask that the city of Annapolis exert pressure on the state of Maryland to make safety improvements to the stretch for the better of its residents, including but not limited to installing traffic calming to lower vehicular speeds, repaint the crosswalks they removed in our community, and fix the confusing timing and visual challenges at the signal crosswalk near Bushnappolis Library. I know Alderwoman Pendell Charles will attend a meeting with me later this week. But I implore the city to continue to use all available resources to pressure the state to improve pedestrian safety. Thank you all.
Thank you. State your full name and address. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Francesca King. I'm, I live at thirteen oh six Homewood in Annapolis, Homewood Lane. I just felt it was important to note that I resigned of Chair of the Recreation Advisory Board after, I think, about two years of working really, really hard to collaborate and advise, but coming up against wall after wall. I just wanted to note that several members did resign from the board and they could really use support from the city and the department.
Thank you. Alderman Gay.
Is it running?
Sorry.
Is it running, the board?
There are several members, several have been there for a really long time. I mean, it still exists. There's, I think, I checked the website today, actually, there's four members left.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come forward and speak? We appreciate everything you do for the community. Thank you so much, everybody. We know that you're passionate about this. Alderman Savage.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I just want to point out, I think we should probably move all the testimony except for Mr. Atetto to testimony for the, for the budget, which is under O ten twenty-five.
Sure. Thanks.
And also just a comment on the because our public hearing is still open on the budget. I think we need to be mindful, even though we have a target for our, to get our target, to get our amendments in last Friday, I think we need to be aware that as long as public comment is open, we still need to be able to factor that in and be able to introduce amendments if we need to respond to the public comments.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else like to come forward? Okay, I declare the public hearing closed. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is consent calendar. We love the consent calendar.
We get a motion on the consent calendar, please.
So moved.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mayor Buckley.
Aye.
Alderwoman Pendell Charles. Alderwoman Finlayson.
Aye.
Alderman Shanomeyer.
Aye.
Alderman Gay.
Aye.
Alderman Savage.
Aye.
Alderman Arnett.
Aye.
Alderman Huntley.
Aye.
Alderman Oney.
Aye.
Thank you all. Okay, Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is public hearings beginning with the O ten twenty-five, annual budget appropriation and property tax levy.
Anybody here to speak on the budget, O ten twenty-five, please come forward.
I think Mr. Kardashian.
I'd like to accept into the record the Planning Commission findings that may eighth twenty twenty-five for O ten twenty-five. Open?
It's closed.
Okay. I'm going to declare the hearing closed on O ten twenty-five. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is legislative actions, beginning with first readers, ordinance O six twenty-five, clearing snow and ice from city sidewalk.
Alderman Gay.
Thank you. I thought the, when the public testimony for the budget was two meetings. No?
We only leave the hearing open until we receive the findings from the Plant, Planning Commission, and we received those today, so the hearing.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. We're on first reader of O six twenty-six. Could I get a motion to adopt that? O six twenty-five, sorry.
Second.
You. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. I'll refer that to O six twenty-five to Environmental Matters Committee. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is ordinance O eight twenty-five, Chesapeake Children's Museum lease renewal through June thirty, twenty thirty.
Thank you. Could I get a motion on that, please?
So moved. Second.
You. Alderman Gay.
I would like this at Housing Human Welfare, please.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Also to the Finance Committee, Environmental Matters and Rules of City Government. Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is ordinance O twelve twenty-five, prioritizing affordable spending through expansion of Financial Advisory Commission duties.
Is there a motion to adopt O dash twelve dash twenty-five on first reader?
Aye.
Second.
You. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I'd like to refer that to Finance Committee, Financial Advisory Commission and the Economic Matters Committee. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is ordinance O thirteen twenty-five, compensation of mayor, older persons and city manager.
Is there a motion to adopt O dash thirteen dash twenty-five on first reader?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Thank you. Let's refer that to the Finance Committee and Rules of City Government Committee. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is ordinance O fourteen twenty-five, implementation of Annapolis Ahead Comprehensive Plan twenty forty.
Is there a motion to adopt O dash fourteen dash twenty-five on first reader?
Second.
Alderman Savage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick, a few remarks on this, because I, so first of all, I'm going to ask that this gets sent to Environmental Matters. And I'm going to yeah, I am going to support it on first reader. But just to give everybody a heads up, I am going to work on some amendments to this because generally, you know, this kind of approach, leading with density is, you know, it's a philosophy of density-driven development. And the issue with that is that it does perpetuate some of the impacts, like traffic and parking impacts. And in my ward, especially over the years, I've heard a lot of complaints about Forest Drive. And so what concerns me, you know, we've just heard reports on the, on the Transit Development Plan. My concern is that there's no connection, there's no plan to address the traffic right now. And so I hope to amend that in the, with a budget amendment, but also with amendments to this legislation to make it more of a transit-driven or transit-oriented development, or at the very least to transit-supportive development. So we can work in different mechanisms like taxing incremental districts, TIPS. Or you have many benefit agreements, things that you can get in place before the density happens to make sure the developers are, help contribute to the solution. Because right now, again, we don't. But I'm meeting with the Director of Planning Zoning soon to see if he has any ideas as well. So that's it. Thank you.
We look forward to those. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We're going to refer that to the Planning Commission, Rules of City Government and Environmental Matters.
And Housing and Human Welfare.
And Housing. Right, right. Okay. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is Resolutions in First Reader. R twenty-two twenty-five is the first one. City sponsored special events in fiscal year twenty twenty-six.
A motion to adopt R dash twenty-two dash twenty-five on first reader?
So moved.
Second.
You. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Let's refer that to the Finance Committee. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is Resolution R twenty-four twenty-five, Confirmation of Human Resources and Integrated Technology Solutions Directors.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt R dash twenty-four dash twenty-five on first reader?
So moved.
Second.
Why is this necessary?
Alderman Gay.
Why is this necessary?
City Manager, sir.
I just feel like we've changed titles in office names before without reassigning or reconfirming appointment.
Go to the City Manager on that.
That's something that we talked about with the Office of Law and the conclusion was that given the change from an office to director, that we should reconfirm their appointments to those roles. You might have a better way of putting that.
Done first reader. Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Point of information, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Arnett.
Since these people are in the job and we're about ready to do budget, recognizing them, is this something where we should suspend the rules or do we have time?
Believe we have time. City Manager.
I'm not sure I'm in a great position to, to answer that. Mike, I don't know if you've got a
Be on the next agenda, I think.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is, is, is this, are they using the twenty-five or twenty-six K recommendations? Is this? I'm confused on that and the, on the fiscal impact.
City Manager.
The pay scales themselves are not changing, F Y twenty-five to F Y twenty-six. The fiscal note simply says notes that nothing's changed, changing from what we've already submitted.
Thank you.
Whether the, great.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is Resolution for second readers. Legislative action, second reader, beginning with Resolutions R twenty-four twenty-five, confirmation, nope, I'm sorry, R twenty, R two twenty-five. Demonstration program to build green roofs on city bus shelter.
Is there a motion to adopt R dash two dash twenty-five on second reader?
So moved.
Second.
You. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mayor Buckley.
Aye.
Alderwoman Pendell Charles. I think we have a question.
I didn't see your hands up. Sorry.
Damn luck.
Can I call that back? I didn't see your hands up. I apologize. Alderman Savage.
Alderman Shanomeyer was first.
Okay, Alderman Shanomeyer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is basically just setting up
There's a lot more before we actually do it, though. Alderman Shanomeyer.
This is basically just setting up a pilot program to check out if this works and whether or not, before we start expanding it and mass trend, mass pushout, right?
Yeah, and essentially the very small you know, trial, just to see if it'll, if it'll work out. And hopefully expand more city buildings. But obviously, when we went to Sweden, these things were everywhere. And what really caught my eyes were the impact that they had in low-income communities. And so I thought it would be fantastic to bring here. I'm hoping that most of the trials will go in, obviously, low-income communities and places where bus shelters are in high demand. So, thank you.
So I really appreciate that we're trying this as a very small step, seeing if it works, trying to find out what issues we may need to sort out with. Maintenance, if that's a problem, we're not just jumping all in both feet. This is, again, a very small step to test the waters before going all in. So thank you for doing that. No further questions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Savage.
Yeah, just a few, Alderman Shanomeyer said it better than I. And I also think that, you know, sometimes we need to try new things. And this is relatively minor. We can always scale back the trial if people are concerned about the amount of money, because we don't, at this point, know how much maintenance it's going to require. So, yeah, it'll give us a chance to monitor it and see how it works. But just a reminder, this does need to be included as a budget amendment if we're going to move forward with it. Because there currently is no money allocated, I believe.
Alderman Arnett, then Alderman Huntley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the things that came to light when we were discussing this in environmental matters is we do have some green roofs in the city on buildings that are not being properly maintained. Pip Moyer being a big example of that. I'm supporting this because it's a demonstration project, but also because I think we need to learn better methods to maintain our other green roofs in the city.
Thank you. Alderman Huntley.
Well, I have a feeling I'm going to be futile, but I do want to speak against this. I, I appreciate trying something new and I love green roofs. I took a whole class on green roofs at one point. I built green roofs, maintained green roofs, they're great. But when we look at the, the cost on here, the fiscal impact note said five thousand dollars. That seems like reasonable to try something out. But if you go over and look at the staffing impact, it's saying it's going to take a half of F T E. That's a lot of money. What's that? Thirty thousand dollars, forty thousand dollars a year, depending on the person? Now, maybe that's being conservative. But I just, I, if we're going to put that person's time, I'd rather have it go towards fixing the green roofs we already have. So I just feel compelled to speak up on this and say I love putting money towards the environment when we can and when it's going to have good, meaningful impacts. But I think if we were, whatever money we were going to spend on this, I think we could have, make more impactful environmental impact with that money.
You. Pendell Charles.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too have concerns, but it says it's a demonstration program. And the five thousand dollars, I'm comfortable with. My concern is that if at some point during the budget, during the fiscal year, will there be a request for additional funds? If it requires something else that I can't even think of at this point. So that's my somewhat hesitation, but I will vote for this. But I'm hesitant too on the maintenance and other additional costs that it could entail. But the five thousand, I am comfortable with. Thank you.
You will finish the vote. Alderman Gay.
Thank you so much. And I appreciate our conservative fiscal hawks on the council. You know, we need that balance as we're all Democrats, I think, right? I, 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 I agree. I, you know, had concerns. I've had great conversations with the environmental staff and our Director of Resiliency. And the experiences that she's had working on this and looking at other cities. And so if the trial does not work, I will accept that. But I'm eager to learn from our mistakes, as the aldermen admitted, you know, I'm eat off every time I think about Pip Moyer and the roof and the community resource that that could be. That's another thing. When we were in the Netherlands, they repurposed and reused so many of the roofs for community gathering spaces, community gardens. And so hopefully this, you know, takes the lid off of that. But I'd also like to, at some point, see you know, how we could be successfully commercially and making rooftops more accessible, obviously, in our downtown Upper West Street area. Because there's money in that. And so looking forward to just all the possibilities that we can explore here and appreciate the support and, and recommendations on finance.
You. So we will finish the vote. Sorry.
Yes. Mayor Buckley.
Aye.
Alderman Pendell Charles.
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson.
Aye.
Alderman Shanomeyer.
Aye.
Alderman Gay.
Aye.
Alderman Savage.
Aye.
Alderman Arnett.
Aye.
Alderman Huntley.
Aye.
Alderman Oney.
Nay.
Thank you.
But. You, Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item of the agenda is R thirty eight twenty four condemnation of and possession of real estate property at two forty five West Street.
Aldman Huntley.
Uh, yeah, so I I would encourage my colleagues to vote this down. We, uh, the intention here really was to bring this forward, to get the absentee landlord to do something with the property, whether that was filling condemning and having the city take it over or have it sold. And and it has now been sold to a local person who's going to put homes there. So at this point, I think passing this legislation would be counterproductive to the council's goals, and I would encourage all my colleagues to vote again.
Can you get it onto the floor, please?
Oh, sorry. Uh, yeah, okay.
Move it.
Move it. Yes. Motion to adopt it on second reading. Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
You. Uh, first hand up is Aldman Gay, then Aldman Savage.
I would encourage, um, you know, my colleagues to keep in mind that, uh, when Alderwoman Ellen Ortienny was here and she started this, uh, fight, it was for affordable housing. Um, and the alderman from Ward one, when he, uh, joined us on the council, he echoed that it was for affordable housing. And what is being, what will be proposed will not be affordable housing. I know that. He knows that. You know that. And so we have a, a, a obligation as members of this council to stick to our commitment to affordable housing. I don't know how many times have we kicked the can down the road when it comes to 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 housing equity within this city? And I'm more intrigued, and I've asked the Office of Law to look into this at our last meeting. I don't know what happened with that. Uh, the MPDU, uh, uh, code and, uh, i- is this developer, uh, circumventing the MPDU rule? Because this is this person formerly worked for the developer of those townhouses. Now they've started their own organization and they're continuing on the, uh, townhouse development. Once you build ten units, you have to, uh, you know, include moderately priced dwelling units uh, within the new new development. These should be MPDUs. And so this is, something is not right here. Uh, and I'm worried about, you know, housing for our public safety officials, housing for our teachers, housing for the council, housing for, you know, everybody. And and this is something that it just can't go on. I encourage, I I would hope that we would, um, vote in favor of this and hopefully the Office of Law can figure out some creative way to stick to what their, uh, uh, the word wording says, working toward construction on affordable housing on the same blighted and vacant lot.
Aldman Savage, then Aldman Shanomeyer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, uh, here, here on the MPDU, uh, if it's over ten, they will have to comply. But, you know, we have time to change that. If we want to change it, um, to be a lower number of units that triggers the MPDU requirement, because I definitely, uh, would would agree with you. Um, as far as voting this down, I would suggest that instead of voting it down, just withdraw it. If your stance is it's not needed, why would we want to vote on it? Let's just withdraw it because then we can save our options in the future if we actually do need to reintroduce this, uh, with the time we have left. Because your time are hands if we vote no on it.
Aldman Shanomeyer, then Aldman Arnett.
Just on the issue of whether or not this can actually work as capital A HUD defined affordable housing, the lot isn't big enough to make it, to make the economics work. And in order for it to be below market rate, it's got to be subsidized by something. We don't have the tax credits lined up to make it subsidized by something, which means it's going to be sitting empty for longer and longer periods of time. Or we'd have to give them a huge density bonus in order to make that pencil out. That's just how the economics of building something works. Um, and as regards to whether it go, the new stuff going up or and it being expensive, the people who can afford to buy that are going to come here anyway. We're not spawning them out of nowhere if we build, if it gets built. They're going to come. They're going to displace someone who was going to buy an older, less expensive unit. And the people who would have bought that are then going to buy another older, less expensive unit, and that cascades down in the housing shortage. The issue with Annapolis is high housing costs is there's just not enough units for us. Building new expensive housing does add to that supply overall and you look at it similar to when we stopped building new expensive cars during the pandemic. Yes, new expensive cars aren't cheap or affordable, but when you stop at building those, the cost of used cheaper cars skyrocketed. That's what we've done for housing for the past thirty years. So I really do agree. We need to loosen up the zoning code to make building lower cost, whether it's subsidized, capital A HUD affordable workforce housing, or just smaller, cheaper market rate homes available on this lot itself. That doesn't exactly work out, and we don't have those laws on the books now. And waiting for perfect to be the enemy of good is just going to keep an empty lot vacant. And right now, there's no affordable homes on this lot. There's no anything on this lot. This just does more good putting something up there.
You, Aldman Arnett, then Aldman Gay. Get his hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I must confess, I'm a little unclear exactly what's going on. This has been off again, on again, on the agenda. Uh, I believe we had it on in order to put pressure to get somebody to complete an agreement. Last I knew, this is private property. If we pass this resolution, it would become public property, it would become ours, and then we would have to figure out how to dispose it. So do we have a purchaser who is going to redevelop this property? In which case, what, uh, Alderman Huntley suggests either voting it down or removing it makes sense to me. But I I really am not clear what's going on with this.
Aldman Huntley.
Yeah, I would just say the agreement to sell it is fully signed and executed. So it is now owned by a local person who's going to build housing. So that was sort of the trigger we were waiting on was you see, is this actually going to get sold to someone who actually wants to do something with it rather than just let it rot? And that has happened. Uh, and wh- while I have the floor, I would just add, I I think Aldman Savage is actually correct. We could withdraw it as long as the city attorney is okay with that. But, um, to be technical about it, the mayor is the sponsor because of the transition between myself and Alderman Tierney. So you would have to withdraw it.
I'm definitely going to withdraw it after Alderman Gay speaks.
Right, right.
Thank you.
So if if withdrawn, if for some reason this, um, purchase falls through, w- will we still have the right to go back to, um, taking this kind of an action? Uh, or are we precluding our ability?
You can always do another condemnation on the property anytime. But condemnation in and of itself doesn't accomplish anything other than give the Office of Law the authority to sue the owner of the property. You still have to go to trial, probably two years from whenever it gets passed.
Right.
And then you have to have a jury vote on the price, and then the city has to have the money ready to pay the owner at that point.
So since somebody has bought it, it doesn't seem like we ought to be pursuing an action to take it away from them. Uh, we want the property developed. Uh, so I would urge the mayor to withdraw, and I will support that motion.
Uh, Aldman Gay, then Alderman Pendell Charles.
Thank you. Typical, um, affordable housing. And everybody's like, oh, now it's property rights. But when I was bringing up property rights a couple of months ago, when you were trying to dictate what type of fence people can put up and how they can take it down, there was no concern. I, this is, this is, this isn't, it is, it really is frustrating, uh, that we're missing the mark on affordable housing here. Um, and and to my colleague from Ward five, there is always a way, uh, when you have, um, well, th- that's what our Office of Law is for. You charge them with a mission, and they figure out a way within the scope of the law how to legally get something accomplished. And so if we wanted it, we could have had it. That's my last point, and I'll be, uh, voting against the withdrawal.
Thank you. Pendel Charles.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I distinctly recall when our current planning and zoning director came on September the eleventh, a year and a half ago. He asked each one of us to take him on a tour of our ward. I took him on a three hour tour on all eighty eight streets because I wanted him to get a good look at what was in at least my ward at the time. Um, I don't want us going down the road of picking and choosing what communities we're going to put affordable housing. Um, I've got a good portion in in my ward, uh, but I think everybody needs to take a bite out of the apple and be considerate and look at their own wards. And that was part of the small area planning that we had in the comp plan to take a look at your ward and see where affordable housing can go. Now, I don't know all the logistics and all the things that we've gone through regarding this property. I mean, I've been here and listened, but, um, Alderman Huntley and the mayor have have more of an insight into what's going on legally as well as the Office of Law. But I think we need to step back and take a look at our own areas and communities as to where we could put two or three duplexes or two or three affordable homes. Because I think it makes our city a better city. Um, and I'm going to harken back to what we heard from Play Annapolis and the other partners. When we all work together and we all live together, we all play together, it makes our city a better place. And so I just want to put that on the record. I don't think one or two communities awards should be, um, the only ones that we look at. Whether this is appropriate, I don't know, and I'm not going down that road. But I just want to remind everybody that we all play a part in affordable housing. Thank you.
You, Aldman Philason.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, you know, I I loathe to repeat what's already been said. Um, but I believe that we need direction. We do not have a mission to bring affordable housing to the city. We talk about it on the periphery, but we don't do anything to make it happen. Uh, this property is already sold, so that ship is sailed. But we should plan, diabolically plan, whenever there are other opportunities, workforce housing should be our priority. No question about it. And we should try our best to defeat anything other than that, because that's what the city needs. You know, we've got lots of high end homes and we have a supply of low end homes. But that middle group, the policemen, the teachers, the firefighters, nowhere in the mix. So I would like to see, before I leave this council, that we take a definitive position that our efforts would go towards workforce housing from here on out. Thank you.
So I am going to make a motion to withdraw. Could I get a second on that, please? Right, we'll just do a roll call. Yeah.
Mayor Buckley.
Uh, aye.
Alderman Pendell Charles.
Aye.
Alderman Philason. Um, Alderman, um, Shanomeyer.
Aye.
Aldman Gay.
No.
Aldman Savage.
Aye.
Aldman Arnett.
Aye.
Aldman Huntley.
Aye.
Aldman Gay.
Aye.
Everybody was heard there. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Uh, Mr. City Attorney. Uh, Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item agenda.
Agenda is complete, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Is there anything else for good order?
I have something. I have something.
Aldman Pendell Charles.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, at our last work session, we had Director Vogel here from Public Works. Uh, there was an issue concerning two projects in my ward, and I want to publicly apologize for, um, direct on the, I would like to apologize to Director Vogel. I was incorrect on what, uh, I thought was going on. He corrected me, and I just want to say that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anybody else? Aldman Shanomeyer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I thought we were supposed to do the Mother's Day slideshow presentation today of everybody, uh, sent their photos in of us and our moms.
Oh.
Uh, so because we forgot to do that, I'm going to wish everybody who is a mom a happy belated Mother's Day.
Nice. Thank you. Uh, Aldman Huntley.
In that vein, I'll say today, today's my dad's birthday, so I'm going to wish him a happy birthday.
All right. Hey. Okay. I gotta get a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Meeting adjourned.